Welcome to the special meeting of the Council of Marsfield. And the first order of business is the pledge of allegiance. Will you all please rise and join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States
The flag of the United States.
And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item of business is citizen comments. Do we have any citizens who wish to make comments concerning the budget? If not, I will turn the gavel over to Alderperson Spiros to conduct the hearing as the chair of the Finance Budget Personnel Committee.
Good evening, y'all. All right, so we are on to E. Receive staff update regarding council request made at the October 16th meeting. I imagine most of this is you, Steve?
Yes, it is Rebecca. I'll take the lion's share of it, and then I'll turn it over to Jennifer for the last item. Thank you. Welcome or good afternoon, everyone. I'm just going to walk through a lot of what we talked about at the last meeting. But the premise of this is here, as you go through the deliberations, there are a number of items that we introduced last week at Sapporo that we'd like you to include in the ultimate approval of changes for the final budget. Many of them are housekeeping in nature, but I want to walk through them again to see if there's any questions. And then if we get to that point tonight where you are ready to make a decision about what to send to public hearing in late November, I'll ask for a motion to incorporate these into that final proposal that goes to the public. Otherwise, we'll be looking for that on the meeting on Thursday if we have another meeting. But at some level, we definitely want to incorporate these into the changes that are made. So I think we have a PowerPoint here. If you could go ahead and start that, I'll walk through them. Thank you. I'm not operating off my tablet, unfortunately, so I don't know if I'll be able to tap through it, Jennifer. I had problems with a tablet. I'm working off my wife's iPad. For some reason, I was able to look like I was going to get on Zoom with my tablet, and it just didn't make the connection. So she's graciously allowed me to use her iPad. So if we look forward, let's go through some of these. The first one is an $1,800 addition we're looking to make. That's because the mayor has historically had a $150 a month allowance for in-town driving to various events, activities, be it ribbon cuttings, meetings, whatever. That was inadvertently omitted from the budget that was sent to you earlier this month. We'd like to add that back in. That would be under administration. The next item would be under the Street Department for the category that involves parades. I think the best fact, we combined some of our categories with parades and celebrations and that type of thing. And somehow out of that, $7,000 roughly for motor pool charges for parade-related activities, use of our equipment and whatnot, was omitted. We'd like to add that back as well. And then I think we talked about this last week. There've been requests made by a council member for determining whether or not we could save some money on street lighting expense due to the changeover they're making at utilities to LED bulbs. And Nick Cum, the general manager, got back to us and said he could reduce roughly $2,800 based on the number of streetlights that will be changed out in 2024. So we made that change for you as well, $2,802 in the engineering department. Then we have several changes. I want to touch on this for the library. The initial proposal that we brought to call for a $25,000 blanket additional cut to the library budget. That's because I'd spoken with Jill Porter, the library director, and said, you know, we've got to narrow this down farther, but I didn't have any particular line items to point to. I wanted to leave it to her on the library board to determine where those cuts might come from. And so we ultimately, and we also projected, I'll tell you more about in a minute, about a $40,000 contribution to the city budget from the library reserve fund. And all this is to deal with the fact that they have incorporated a new pay plan that kicks off on January 1st to try and get library staff to where they belong. They borrowed off of Carlson, definitely part of library payrolls around the state, and had adopted a plan earlier this year back in the summer. So that's what a lot of this has to do with. But at the end, ultimately, we had to make some changes or got to make some changes because it was determined that we maybe didn't need that full amount of the $25,000 in cuts and the full $40,000 from the library reserve fund. We actually cut in half the amount we believe we needed from cuts. And then by 10,000, we reduced the amount from the library reserve fund down to 30,000, which leaves them a little bit better place going forward. So what you're seeing here, and I think if you go back one slide, yeah, $550 for office supplies, adding back almost $5,000 for library publications and subscriptions, $1,500 for library travel and education at department head level, $3,850 for operating supplies, $1,855 for library computer software upgrades, and then reducing by about $5,300 library permanent employee salaries and wages. And these are all changes that were made internally, again, with Jennifer and Jordan and me working with Jill Porter on how to try and get this all balanced to the point where it was acceptable. And as I mentioned earlier, the $10,000 reduction then. So the amount of library fund balance we'd be applying, instead of the original projection in the initial budget, $40,000 has been reduced down to 30,000. They started out with a balance close to 200,000, so this will be less of a dent in the amount that they carry forward for future years. And then I think we talked last meeting about the contingency. The budget we proposed and sent to you for your review on October 10th called for roughly a $127,000 contingency. And kind of bookmarking, I won't use the word earmarking, but sort of figuring that $50,000 of that would be available to us for adjustments that may be necessary based upon the results of the compensation market study being done by McGraw. That would still leave us another $77,000. For odds and ends that come up, you see scattered budget resolutions through the year. Things were unanticipated, unnecessary repairs or other types of expenses. The fact of the matter is that the changes that we're making here, that you're hearing about again tonight, would result in reducing that amount by 23,418, leaving a contingency of about $104,000 for our general operations. Now, what I've done here, Jennifer's going to mention additional contingency. It's something that we incorporated last year as part of meeting expenditure restraint. We have a buffer that we want to add just to be able to continue year after year, you know, qualifying for that piece of the pie that's so important to us, where we get $400,000 to $500,000 a year from the state. But we'll talk about that in a minute. Other changes, well, just to highlight, here's the list of all the changes. Most of them are ones that you have heard in my presentation tonight. These are the things we're going to look for you to adopt at the end of this meeting or the end of the 26th as part of the final changes to the budget. There are a couple that are not, you know, included in here. Things that were adjusted, I think in the library budget, a couple of other items. But now I want to move on to the general fund. Let's move on, go ahead. The changes that really do not affect the general fund in terms of an increase or decrease. The first is a $4,000 reclassification. Touched on this last week. Moving some fees from a 52, I'm sorry, $5,892 fund for fiscal agent charges down to the finance department budget. And that is because we're talking about fees related to our financial advisor, but they're different than the ones that should be in the other account where they started. And then finally, 102,771. This is what we talked about last week with the benefits. There are a number of employees in the library that will get payout of post-employment health plan benefits when they retire. And we need to account for that. The monies have been there all along. We're looking to move them to the library reserve fund and to put them in that committed fund balance so that it's where it belongs rather than in administration. So again, this is net zero impact on the general fund. And then 16,500, again, not a general fund impact, but couple items, oxygen and medical supplies, total like 16,500 that were inadvertently omitted from the 605, the EMS fund. We're asking that those be put back in where they were, like I said, accidentally missed from the original budget. And that would be for the purpose of our ambulance operation. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Jennifer, and she can explain a little bit more about the expenditure restraint issue and what we're looking for in an increase in contingency. Again, not based on the idea that we're looking to spend a lot of additional funds, but it's got to do with qualifying for future years, and it does seem to continue to be in our best interest. So with that, go ahead, Jennifer.
We can think of what we're doing with contingency sort of in two phases. The contingency that Steve talked about is kind of set aside for what may come in terms of comp study or what have you. Kind of that second level of contingency has to do with year-over-year budget growth in a program that the state administers for keeping your budget in line growth-wise. Historically, each year the state would tell us what that year-over-year growth allowance would be. It's a calculation based on CPI that the state certifies plus 60% of your net new construction. In the past, we have added an amount to our budget as contingency to kind of maximize flexibility for those unforeseen events that might happen in future years. Now, with Act 12, they actually kind of do away with that formal calculation for the next two budget cycles of the state. And they are telling us that if you qualified in 2023 for your 2024 payout, you will automatically qualify in '25 and '26. We'll lose $60,000 each year from our amount. But there's no limit per se on how much your budget can grow. So for this year, our calculation would have resulted in a 5.4% if we were following the old rules over our prior year budget of 25,290. So just a suggestion to include that just 5% growth year-over-year in a budget, which would be in addition of $1,264,500. And I have prepared a little spreadsheet that might help illustrate why it's important to go through this exercise. So for last year, our budget ended up being 25,290. Our contingency that we included last year was $2,052, and that was because we had an 8% allowable year-over-year growth. So before adding in that 8%, our budget would have been 23,237. Now, if we're following the historical state guide on our allowable budget of 5.4%, and if we base that on our budget, our anticipated budget of 23 million, our allowable budget for 2024 would just be 24 and a half million. Our proposed budget is currently sitting at 25 million. So we would have been just under $800,000 over had we not budgeted this $2 million of contingency last year. So because we did that, and if we followed the state's allowable budget increase of 4.5% over what we actually budgeted of the 25,290, we could budget up to 26,655 for a buffer of that million three. So that's why we put that buffer in because we do actually throughout the year have spending out of our contingency, even though we might not put it in the budget formally. For 2023, we've actually had requests out of the contingency fund of $590,000 through various budget resolutions throughout the year and have consumed thus far 514,000. So that buffer is important to have for all of the various reasons that have come up throughout the year. Going with just a recommended allowance of 5%, going through the exercise of our prior year budget at 5% puts us at the $1,264,500, which would be a general fund budget of the $26,554. Are there any questions now, or would you like to save those towards the end? This would be the final step in the budget.
Russ, go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to add if I could.
Go ahead, Steve.
Okay, thank you, Rebecca. Yeah, I would like to add that Jennifer and I did meet as part of getting ready for this line item on the agenda and looked back at the last meeting and reviewed some of the discussion. We didn't see anything else that we were asked to bring forward in terms of further information. There was great discussion, but in our opinion, after looking back, this is what we believed that we were supposed to bring to you today. So we take any questions on any of it before we move to the next line on council discussion.
So Jennifer, could you click on the contingency spending tab, the line items?
Yes.
I just have a quick question. So the one that caught my eye was the expenditure for the pool, and I think it was concession revenue. I just wanted to verify that some of the contingency funds that are used are actually like a loan that came back in. So we pulled, what, $70,565 from contingency and were repaid $65,000? Is that correct?
Right. So in theory, you could put that roughly $5,000 back into the contingency bucket. I have not done that in this case. Like I did for the referendum, we initially allowed $45,000. We spent 32, so we returned that almost $13,000 back to the contingency account. I haven't done that for the pool. I certainly can.
Probably the exception, but just thought I would ask. Thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Tompkins?
Thank you. Okay, so the next slide. I completely understand why we need to do the contingency to have that expenditure restraint and to get the money. But where is this coming? Is this the same contingency, this, you know, 1.2 million that's coming out of our contingency? Like, is it out of sort of the savings account?
Right. So most likely, unanticipated expenditures would have fund balance as their unaside fund balance as the revenue source. The exception would be if for some reason we got a grant or some other unanticipated revenue, then the revenue would be current revenue. In the general fund, that's probably not as likely because we track our grants separately. But if it happened, or if we got a windfall donation from, you know, a community member and we needed to spend that out of the general fund, then it wouldn't come out of that reserve. It would be the current revenue.
And as our reserve, I remember reading somewhere, we're at a good place, right? Like, we want it to be 25%.
We're just a hair under, so we're very close to our minimum requirement.
And this, adding this 1.2 million, it would still be okay? Would we still be at?
Well, that doesn't go into our reserve. That would be, this would be a capacity for expenditures. So if we had to actually use some of that through the budget resolution process, potentially that reserve could be depleted.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Jennifer, were you done with your?
Yes.
Okay. Steve, I can't see you on the screen. Do you have anything else?
No, I don't, Rebecca. That's why I wanted to present.
Okay, thank you. All right. So that was a letter EF. Council discussion, making any desired changes to the recommended 2024 budget. I think we'll just, yeah, okay, Russ, go ahead.
One quick question on item D. So would it be appropriate then to, maybe, yeah, P, rather, what we just listened to, to make a motion to accept those into the proposed 2024 budget as presented?
We're going to do that now, or are we going to have discussion first in case somebody has? I think we'll do discussion first in case somebody has something to say about that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I did. All right. So back to the meeting. Let's see here, council discussion. So we're going to go to the council discussion. I don't know how you guys want to do this. Do you want to go round robin, or if anybody has anything that they want to start off with? Is there a problem?
Yes.
Okay. We're getting an IT problem fixed here, folks. So just hang.
As usual.
Hang tight.
What's it doing?
Madam Chairman?
Yes?
While they are working on the wonders of the space age over there, I wonder if I may have the floor and make some comments concerning Jermaine to the budget that.
Mrs. Tompkins, you were first. Do you mind if she goes first? Okay, okay, Ed, go ahead.
Okay, oh, thank you. I generally was pleased when we first saw this budget that a couple of the big items that we've been messing around with for years were addressed. They addressed it here. And then one of them was, don't balance the budget out of the general fund. That was a big one. The other one, it's alive, that's good. The, thank you, thank you. The other one, the two, was that I thought we had borrowing under control. We talked, as we talked about in the last meeting, we're in this, we're in this sort of death struggle between operations and debt. And I guess I was pleased to see how things were working out in the regular budget, and I wasn't paying a lot of attention to the other things. But I am, I am very leery of our budgeting and what we're doing as far as our borrowing. I think we're going to be borrowing over $7 million in this next year. I've got the numbers here that I can pull out in a few minutes. But I'm very worried about that trend and how much we're going to have to do with the future. The other thing we talked about, and we're going to be discussing later on in the regular council meeting, will be the offer of a building for a police department. And we don't even have that in our capital improvement plan anywhere now. We don't have anything on it now. I'm suggesting that this budget isn't that bad. I'm not terribly upset with this budget. I'm a little uneasy about the thing, the presentation we just heard about putting an extra million dollars, a million, was it a million two? Into the contingency fund? Remember last year or so, we did the same thing. We put, what, $500,000 or $400,000 into the contingency fund to be eligible for the expenditure restraint program? Excuse me. And we promised on, you know, promised on our black little hearts that we wouldn't spend that money, that it was just for the purpose of securing the $400,000 from the other, from the restraint program. And yet we did anyway. And I think that's it. I see Steve wants to contradict me, so I'll yield the floor to him if it's okay with the chief.
Steve, go ahead.
Just a change of, thanks, Rebecca. Not a matter of contradicting, just trying to throw a few numbers. The amount that we actually added a contingency at the end of last year was even larger, was $2 million. And again, there was no intent at all of spending it, but just to be able to qualify more easily for expenditure restraint in future years. I believe that Jennifer was showing a couple of minutes ago what we've expended out of that this year, and there were a couple of different repairs, fire truck, some other things. We put some money toward the referendum for public relations, and all those together added up to, I don't remember what the number was, $400,000 or something like that. But we don't want to do that very much, you're right. Keep in mind that every single one of those items on that list did require council approval as a budget resolution, which is why early in 2023, I think some members of the council were getting a little bit leery about how many budget resolutions you were seeing on agendas. But like I said, several of those were things that just popped up that we didn't have any control over, and we had to deal with them, like I said, maintenance issues or whatever. So it was a lot bigger number, it was actually $2 million in 2023.
Go ahead, Ed.
Yeah, I guess. Yeah, I, I, I guess, oh, the, the, the points I'm trying to make are that I, it, it, well, first of all, is uh, we, I guess you wanna call it a reclassification of funds is what we're doing? Um, is, is that being fair to say that, that's what we're doing with the 1, 1.25 million? Um, we're reclassifying them from the general fund, uh, unrestricted, unreserved, uh, to, is that restricted and reserved? Jennifer was one of them.
So, so the offset to that, putting that one, extra 1.2 in the, in the budget would be fund balance applied unassigned?
But it would be fund balance on.
In order to, right, in order to balance the budget to zero.
But I, I'm just, I, I, I feel extremely uncomfortable doing that again because that was, of course, one of the benchmarks that we were looking at, wasn't it?
Um, it, it is, um, but if we keep in, in mind, we had, so far we've used 514-ish thousand of our contingency. Um, however, some of that did have, it was not um, the unassigned fund balance that um, paid for those expenditure, expenditures. Some of that was um, committed fund balance that we already had, savings set aside, and then the other would have been pool revenue. So roughly um, about 225,000 actually came from our unassigned fund balance thus far um, of that 2 point, um, 2.05, 2 million that we set aside last year.
Okay, I, I guess, I, I know uh, uh, I, I know what, what the, the process is here. We put the money aside, swear we're never gonna use it, and then in the next year it's budget resolution after budget resolution to use it. And I, I just feel uncomfortable with setting that aside so that it becomes, for lack of a better term, vulnerable to this. Uh, that's, that's how I feel about it. So I, I'm gonna have to do some hard, uh, hard thinking about whether or not to support this budget. Uh, the other thing is, uh, I, I mentioned this at the last meeting. Um, we, we've gotta start prioritizing our capitals and expenditures and, and what, what do we consider most important? Um, I don't uh, I don't see uh, I, I, I don't, I don't see any way out of these things without trying to build some capacity for borrowing in the future and maybe cutting down our borrowing at, at the present. And I don't see how, how we're gonna make room for a 13 to 15 million dollar uh, police station or uh, who knows what. I, 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 I still hear rumblings now and then about a North Side fire station. Uh, I still hear that every once in a while. Not from, not from the fire department, but from others uh, that, that are interested in it. Um, we, we've gotta make, we've gotta draw the line somewhere and tighten our belts somewhere. And if it's in, in, it could be either in cash by building the, the fund balance, or it can be in not spending, uh, not borrowing as much each year and creating a um, a pathway, a capacity for, for funding some of those other big projects. I just, we're just not doing it. We're living day to day is what I feel like. And I think we need to, we need to do something different here. So I'll, I'll yield the floor now to the chair, all right.
Natasha?
All right, thank you. Um, Jennifer, I am sorry, I'm gonna go back to this again and I, okay. So the contingency fund that we're talking about, this is not actual money, right? This is, it's not like we actually have this money, but it's, or do we have this? How, how does this work?
It, it is, uh, it is an expenditure, right? So um, right now it is not dedicated to a specific purpose. If we had to spend and dedicate some of that money to a, a specific per, purpose, most likely it would come from our unassigned fund balance where you could think of as the savings um, that we currently have. Um, just on the flip side of, of not making that entry, um, I started that conversation with the example of if we had not done that um, and Act 12 didn't change the rules with um, year-over-year budget growth, we would be highly recommending cutting this budget by $800,000 in order to keep our payment. So those are the two sides of that coin. Um, when budget resolutions do come forth, if you choose to put the million two in the budget as contingency, um, it, it is up to the council to determine the ultimate approval. So you can look at that with um, maybe a higher level of scrutiny. Um, in, in this upcoming budget year, the first priority would be to look elsewhere in your budget for a cut if you thought you needed to ask for more money. Um, the last uh, resort is coming forth with a budget resolution, at which time then you would really have to look um, at the substance of the request and make a determination.
And so this money has come, we haven't spent it, but if we do need to spend it, it would come out of unassigned fund balance?
Most likely.
Okay. And if we used, if for whatever crazy reason we had to use 1.2 million of it, would that drastically put us below that 25% of reserve?
It, it would if we, if that was um, the case. If, if we were using that without some dedicated revenue source. It, it would um, impact the percentage, um, because we will be calculating our um, percent um, required minimum fund balance based on expenses and what we have. So if you have less, um, you know, in, in your balance, that percentage will be depleted.
Okay, thank you. I under, I think I understand it. I don't know if I'll understand it next month, but I got it now. All right, I have an, I have a few more questions. Um, I, I feel like um, we as a council need some guidance um, about the fact that we, it looks like, how do I say this? Our CIPs are so large that we're, if we borrow the amount of money that's needed for a police station, we're, we're gonna be really, really tight, like way more than we really want to be. Um, is there a way for us? Because when we approve this budget, and thank you, Jordan, he corrected me from last meeting. I didn't realize that when we approve this budget, it's actually trumping the approval we had of the CIP a couple of months ago. So when we approve this, we're approving the CIP of the borrowing that we're gonna do for next year. But at the same time, we've been told, told by Ellers that we have no room in our borrowing for any big project. So how do we, we, we need a road. We need, like, we need a path to know, how do we make room so that we can do these big projects? And I don't, I think we need help from the finance department for that. So is there a way to help us before it's too late?
You know, the, the, that's a very loaded question, but I'll, I'll give it a shot. So our current CIP um, for the five years is roughly 22 and a half million dollars. Um, that will borrow roughly four and a half or give or take um, a couple hundred thousand dollars each year over the next five years. In doing that borrowing, we will um, kind of ebb and flow with our statutory debt limit um, percentage. So it'll be around the 42, 43, 44%. Um, our levy will hover around for debt service, uh, will hover around four and a half million dollars a year, give or take a little there. Now, if you wanted to drop in a, a large project, um, the, if we, you know, 14 million dollars on a police building, we will not get to our statutory debt limit, but we will be in the upper 50. Um, so 52, 53, 54% um, where the city policy is 65% of our statutory limit. So that will not leave room for anything else that is not in our borrowing plan, such as borrowing for development in a TID or an emergency situation um, that may come up. So that um, happens if, for instance, we put that borrowing in 2025. Um, our, our debt schedule um, goes out to 2042, but we only plop in our anticipated capital expenditures and, and for that five years. So that's what happens if we um, do it in 2025 and we don't change our CIP. Um, in that case, our debt levy um, will hover in the high 5 million and up into 6 million per year. Um, versus four and a half. Um, if we wait until, let's say, 2029, when we don't have our CIP planned out yet, um, we've, we're kind of, you know, ebbing along at our 40-ish percent, 42, 43%. And then if we just plop that in, but don't do CIP um, in 2029, then we bump up um, it, it almost at 50% of our statutory limit, but we haven't planned for the next block of five years. So um, that's one extreme to the other. Um, just going along at, at our current pace, um, adding in a big building right away gives us a big blip and high um, tax levy and little flexibility for other things. Or you wait uh, five years, that's another extreme, but you don't plan out anything else. Um, you know, trying to find that even keel of dropping it in, um, you know, somewhere in between and trying to cut our CIP gives us uh, flexibility in how our levy gets laid out year after year. But we're still going to be over, you know, approaching an over $5 million in levy, no matter really how you smooth it.
So do you feel like um, it would be possible? I, I'm not gonna use painful because the answer would be yes, painful. But would it be possible for us to cut our CIP spending um, just to give us a little bit of buffer, even though you said really it's still gonna be a lot of borrowing?
So, so if, if we looked back towards the end of the budget book at what we are borrowing on our CIP, it, it, it really comes down to the priority of, of where you want to delay um, what's on that current list. So the bulk of that, I mean, it's anywhere from vehicles, um, squads. Uh, there's a fire truck in our current five-year plan. Um, there's some park refreshments. A lot of it has to do with streets and maybe a little bit of stormwater improvements. So anything is possible. Um, it, it, it really depends on where you want to go with, with the priority, um, whether it's the big project, uh, current CIP as we're going, or some combination.
If the council, I feel like um, we haven't had time to really process this idea, but if we approved a budget and then later said, hey, we really need to start trimming our borrowing so that we have space for the police station, would we be able to do that after we've approved a budget?
So um, come January 1, if the budget is approved, that um, typically departments will go ahead and start their project, um, whether it's, you know, our engineering for a new street or for park refresh or, or place their purchase orders for their vehicles. And um, typically our borrowing cycle ha- happens in May, June, July, um, halfway through the year where we um, sign a resolution agreeing that we'll borrow the money to pay for those projects that may have already commenced. So turning off the faucet, um, you know, in January becomes a little cumbersome because of, of the authority given to department heads to go ahead and spend.
Okay, thank you. And am I allowed to ask two more questions?
Um, can we let Steve in for a second? Go ahead, Steve.
I'm just gonna add to what Jennifer's been saying, that uh, you know, in preliminary conversations with our financial analysts, um, Dave Ferris from Ellers, I mean, it, it's pretty evident that if we're gonna make the police station work, we're gonna, we wanna be looking at some reductions to the CIP. Uh, and that's, that, that's an opportunity cost. I mean, if, if you decide that the, the police station is the most important thing, you know, things like streets and some other improvements are gonna have to take a little bit of a backseat. So I do applaud what's been said already by Council President Wagner and others about council priorities. Uh, it, it, it may come down to the fact that, uh, yes, we can take on more borrowing, but it's gonna be with uh, some setbacks in, in other areas that we've been spending upon, especially in our CIP, and, and how far we'd be willing to go to do that, to make it happen.
Natasha, do you have a follow-up?
Okay, just um, two really quick questions about the budget. Did we have enough money for the streets department for the salt? Because we had to buy more salt last year.
That was a budget resolution. Um, that did come from our contingency. It was roughly 45,000 that we replenished that supply.
So do we think we'll have enough money to have all the salt we need for this winter?
Mike, you're up next.
Um, if I knew how much would snow this year and how many times we'd have to plow, I could answer that. Uh, that's a, that's anyone's guess right now. We try to do an average over the last five or six years. Last year, we did see a lot more snow than we've had in, in snow events that we've had in many years past. Um, it would be hard to say or give a prediction on that right now.
All right, thank you. And then lastly, Steve, um, I had asked for a recommendation to have the consultant fee that was in the EDB budget be used um, for the Vanderwall um, consulting fees. Did that get put back in the list, or how does that gonna work?
I'm not sure if you know what that is.
Here's some background noise, can you hear me okay?
No.
Everybody hear me all right?
Yeah.
We can hear you, Steve, you just need to talk up a little bit.
Okay, okay, thank you, I heard some other noises for a little bit. Yeah, uh, no, it, it did, but that would be one of the recommendations we would certainly welcome if you wish to make as part of the, the overall package that you wanna uh, approve to uh, move a, a budget forward to a public hearing. There's no reason why $25,000, uh, actually it's $27,000 couldn't be taken from that 205 Economic Development Fund and that used for the purpose of the Phase 1 on the, the Vanderwall project. Staff didn't add it, we, we would prefer that you add it or somebody on council add it as part of the uh, the, the, the eventual things that you're proposing because we.
Steve, you disconnected. Okay, we're gonna let Mike, Mike, go ahead. Okay, um, you guys on Zoom, if you can hear me, they have to reconnect the call. Can't hear?
We're sorry, all circuits are.
Sorry, folks, we have another technical difficulty.
We don't have a phone.
We're sorry, all circuits are busy now. We're sorry, all circuits are busy now. Please try your call again later. We're sorry, all circuits are busy now. Please try. We're sorry. All circuits are busy.
What? I'm not sure, but I think we need...
Can we even, can we even see?
Three, four, five, six, seven. Wait, three, that's eight. We're okay. One, two, three. Three, four, six, eight. Oh, we're okay. This isn't like, this isn't like...
We're sorry. All circuits are busy now.
I didn't count the back of the first... Is it... Madam Chairman?
We're going to take a five-minute break. All right, I'm going to call this order, call this meeting back to order. Hopefully, we won't have any more technical difficulties. So I believe that we left off... Natasha, were you done at the moment with yours? Okay, we're going to go to Mike Fire then. Mike?
I don't have anything to add.
Okay, all right. Anybody else? Anyone else want to discuss anything about the budget? Ms. Tompkins?
I'll yield to Mike.
Oh, the question I have is are we going to add that $25,000 into the 20 Second Street project?
Is that a motion you're making, Mike?
What are you talking about? Pardon?
Is that a motion that you're making right now, Mike?
Yes, yes, I am.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor to add the $25,000, $27,000 for the study for Second Street redistricting.
One second.
And we have a second. That was you, Ed?
That was me.
Okay.
Could I clarify something before?
You may. Yes, absolutely.
So in the EDB budget, there is $50,000 in there for professional services. There's about half for an action plan and then half is for things that may have come up with the new department. So I'm not sure if we want to increase that to $75,000 or just repurpose that 20... Okay, so that would not require an action to do anything to the budget because the dollars are there.
Okay, so Mike, you're looking just to repurpose, correct? Not correct. Okay.
Okay.
All right. Okay, thank you for that clarification. So I guess we do not need to do anything with that motion or something.
We're still going to vote on that motion in a second. She's just saying we're not adding it back. We are repurposing because it's not specifically clear right now. If we're not adding, we're not adding. We're making very clear, though, that we want that EDB money to go to that fund. So we still should have that.
Okay, so everybody heard what Jessica said. All right, please vote.
Mr. Fire?
Yeah.
And do you have your phone? Are you, yeah?
Yes.
Okay. And Mr. Wagner is actually Mr. Giles right now because we're having a problem with...
It's good, you're okay.
I pushed it.
No, you're actually Mr. Giles.
Oh. Oh, Jesus.
Okay, all right. Okay, so that passes. All right. I'm going to ask one more time. Is there anything that the council has to say, Ms. Tompkins?
All right, this is just to clarify. So just so we know as a council, and thank you, Jennifer, for clarifying this. So we have expenses here and we have revenue here. And last year, we had to cut to make those the same. We had to cut like $800,000. And then this year, our expenses went up, but the state gave us $1 million. So we didn't have to cut anymore because now we're have this awesome budget that's balanced. But if our expenses go up next year, we're not expecting to get more than that extra million. So we will have to cut again next year. So just as a future, thinking about what's going to happen, I'm just laying out next year's budget sheet.
Thank you, Natasha. Ed?
Yes, I need some clarification on this, some help on this. We were going to be billing out the street lighting on the monthly utility bill. That's, and the last year, and I think starting out with this budget, I think we had $260,000 of expense that we would pay to the utility for the use of those. Was that the correct... First of all, I need to know if those numbers are correct, if that was a budgeted number.
I think Jennifer's taken a minute to look that up. Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, last year, the number was 225, I believe, for the expenditures. And again, the reason why we didn't implement in 2023 was some of the stuff we were going to be dealing with, with the referendum and, you know, some of the other issues with utilities and whatnot. But this year, the expenditures are closer to 270, I think is what she'll come back with. But we're planning on starting the streetlight user charge if the council approves it on March 1. So it's not a full 12 months that we'd be looking to recoup those costs or it would be 10 months, roughly 210,000 or 215,000, something like that.
Okay, that's... Okay, Jennifer's coming back up, so I'm going to let her speak before I pounce.
Okay, so 2023 in the budget, we put in a total of $235,000 and that would have been on the expense side for the actual cost of the electricity plus a fee to do the billing. For this year, we're putting in a total of $272,000 on the expense side with recovery to begin in March. What is the revenue number? And we are hoping to recoup $215,000 of that $272,000 expenditure.
Okay, that's...
So your $267,000 for street lighting was correct.
Okay, so, okay, the way that was budgeted, was it originally budgeted as just an expense to the city? There was no revenue line? Is that the way? Is that correct?
Historically, it has only been an expense line. So if you want to think about the revenue source, it would be the tax, the general tax levy is paying.
Obligation.
Right. And then beginning in 2024, we're hoping to have a user charge to offset some of that.
Okay, so did... I guess what I'm asking, this came to the budget in this form originally, right?
Yes.
Okay, so there is no... One constituent called today and felt that we were double billing the public and double taxing the public because they assumed that $270,000 was budgeted as an expenditure. But now you've got another revenue source that you're taking it out of. So basically, that should have been a reduction in general fund expenditures of $270,000. This was the logic that was going on, okay? And so, but what I'm hearing now is it's always, it was set up this way when you proposed it, so there is no $270 sitting out here all by itself without a revenue source attached to it. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, all right. So that means that we're going to... But there will be a general fund to balance, to reach the 270s.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Michael Riley?
Thank you. I have a clarification I'd like to see on the shared revenue that we received. I think there was $315,000 roughly earmarked for EMS. But I think there was requirements on that rest of that money. Had to go to police, fire, EMS, and so forth. How is that adapted in the budget? Does that just drop into general fund? Or how is that handled, if you could, please?
So the supplemental revenue that we're receiving, the $1,030,000, is a general fund revenue and distributed, you know, if we wanted to follow probably the exact letter of the intent, you would divvy that up between police, fire, emergency services, courts, Public Works, maybe one other category. You know, if we looked at all of our expenditures, did we exactly increase all of those categories to that $1,030,000? Most likely not. But, I mean, it goes to contribute to cover the costs of those services that we provide.
Mike, do you have any follow-up? Okay. Steve, did you have anything? I thought you had your hand up for a minute.
I did, I did earlier on something. We were still talking about street lighting, but it doesn't apply anymore, so thank you.
Okay. All right, so we are on letter F still. All right, so we are on letter F still. Any further council discussion? These would be when you would want to mention your recommended changes, if you have any. Mr. Igles.
Okay, just for clarification, since I'm one of the rookies here on the council, what would be the correct procedure going forward, then? Making a motion to adjust something or making a motion then to finalize it, whatever we need to do, is that correct?
Either way, if you do want something changed, you would make a motion to reflect the change that you would want to see. And it would go through the normal procedure. Same as with the, you know, if you're adopting the budget, you would be making a motion to do that.
Thank you.
Ed?
Yeah, thank you. I think I'm gonna put a motion on the floor to accept this budget with a couple of provisos. One would be to accept it and publish it as is required by statute. And the other is that during the next year, and no later than November of next year, that the administration come back to us with a plan on how to moderate our spending, especially our spending as it appears in CIP, and basically how, show us a method to account for the creation of generational projects such as a fire station, a police station, I don't know, dog catcher, you name it. As long as it's a, I want them to define what a generational product, project is. And I think it'd be anything over $5 million, something like that. But I'd make the motion with that, that they come back to us within, by November of next year with a plan to deal with spending as far as the CIP is concerned. And also, we'll just leave it at that right now. I'm just gonna leave it at that. That's a motion.
Okay, so we do have a motion on the floor to adopt to this budget with the caveats that Mr. Wagner listed out. And we have a second by Mr. Varsho.
God doesn't like that one.
Steve, go ahead. We also have a motion to...
Okay. Want me to talk?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure of what we said earlier, that any motion being made, and perhaps Councilmember Wagner intended for this, that includes the dozen or so housekeeping changes that staff walked through earlier.
Ed, did you hear that?
Yeah, not all of it, no, but...
He's wondering basically if your motion includes all the recommended changes that the staff put forward.
That would have to include the recommended changes we saw tonight.
Steve, does that answer your question?
It does, Rebecca, thank you.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second. Mr. Igles, did you want to amend the motion?
I did. I would actually change the date from which Mr. Wagner is set to get it back by instead of November to no later than the first day of October. That way, we can actually take into consideration for the budget season any recommendations or ideas from staff as opposed to having already passed the date.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Mr. Wagner?
Yeah.
Oh, by Mrs. Tompkins, okay. She's catching these things before I see them. All right. Steve?
Thank you. I think just to address the timing concern, you can anticipate, given Councilmember Wagner's motion and what Councilmember Igles said, that staff will get on this much earlier than that, and you'll be seeing and discussing this type of thing early in 2024.
Then you'll be to that line.
I think in general, we talk about the CIP really early in the year.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Stauber?
Could you repeat the motions that are on the floor, please?
Yeah, so currently, we have a motion to amend to an October 1st date. With that original motion, I'll just recap for you because I think that's the question, is to accept the proposed budget with the recommended changes and direct publication of that budget with the caveat that by November, but now an amendment to October 1st, that the staff bring forward a plan on how to moderate spending, and specifically within the CIP, and a method to account for generational projects while also defining what a generational project is.
So we'll vote... Okay, wait, do we have any more questions before I do this? Steve, are you thinking about a question like that?
I'm sorry I missed that, I'm sorry.
Do you have a question? You look really, are you concentrating? Do you have a question?
Yeah, I'm deep in thought, Rebecca. No, I'm not doing anything in particular, I'm sorry.
Okay, no issues. It's just hard to hear because it's raining really hard here, so, okay.
Oh, wow.
So we are going to vote first on the amendment that was made by Mr. Igles, which is just changing the date of the original from November to October. Mr. Fire?
Yes?
So that passes. The next motion was to accept the budget with the recommended changes that were represented today and all the instructions regarding the CIP and borrowing that Mr. Wagner made. Does everybody understand that motion? Okay, with that, we will take a vote. Go ahead.
No.
Mr. Fire?
Yes?
Okay, so that passes. All right. So, let's see. G. Set date and time for public meeting, Tuesday, November 21st at 6:00 PM, or announce date and time for fourth budget meeting, which we will not be needing. Correct? Okay, so the next time for the public hearing will be on Tuesday, November 21st at 6:00 PM.
We can wear blaze orange.
Do you get a motion to that?
No.
Okay. So that's when that will be. All right, with that said, I think we have concluded, and we are adjourned.